Right now. So that is the plan for this evening. We will get started now. So I'm Casey, I'm the Outreach and Engagement Director here at the School Funding Fairness Project. I have Zach, our Project Director here with me and Jen Boyleston, one of our board members, who will be giving the presentation this evening. So they will be giving the presentation and I'll turn it over to them to introduce themselves in just a second. The way it'll work is Zach and Jen will present for about thirty-five minutes. And then at around six forty-five, we will wrap up to do Q and A. The way that Q and A will work is typically when we have a larger group, we do Q and A only in the chat using the chat function. Since we have a pretty small group tonight, you're welcome to unmute yourself and ask a question or use the raise hand function and then wait for me to call on you and then unmute yourself. Either way, if you put your question in the chat, our comms manager Noah will grab it and we will make sure it gets asked. And we will all be out of here by seven. So that is the plan. Zach, I'm going to spotlight you and turn it over to you.
Awesome. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. I very much appreciate seeing everyone on a weeknight. My name's Zach, the Director of the School Funding Fairness Project. We're a nonprofit based in Concord, but we're a statewide organization. We've been around for a few years and a lot of the work we do is educating people, citizens and school boards, legislators, anyone and everyone about how we fund schools, public schools here in New Hampshire, the problems with that and the direct impact on our property taxes. Before I jump into it, I'm gonna let our Board Chair Jen introduce herself. Then I'll be doing the first half of the presentation, Jen will do the second half, and then we'll do some Q and As. Go ahead, Jen, the floor is yours.
Perfect. Yep, I'll just try to be brief. So my name is Jennifer Boyleston and I service Chair of Board for the New Hampshire School Funding Fairness Project. I'm also on the school board, I'm the Vice Chair, and I'm on the Finance Committee in Lyme, New Hampshire. So that kind of localizes me and some of the work that I've done with the school in Lyme is what brought me to become interested in and learn more about the Funding Fairness Project. You know, which probably unsurprisingly largely stems from the conflict that we have almost every year at district meeting when people want to understand why their property taxes are so high. Yeah, so that's, I think that's a pretty good start for an introduction.
All right. And let me know either via someone interrupting me if my audio goes in and out. I'll try to speak up a bit, but let me know if anyone has any trouble with hearing. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. And then we will get started. So this is, as Casey said at the beginning, a kind of shorter version of the presentation that we give all over the state. Have for a number of years now, where we really dig into the twin issues of school funding and its impact on our local property taxes. So here are kind of the five pieces we'll be hitting tonight. Specifically, the taxpayers' students are not treated equitably. The problem is getting worse. And then we've tailored this to current school board members and those aspiring school board members, digging a little bit more to how adequacy aid is calculated. Some of the additional aid categories and the sort of consequences of this system. A few of the things that are being talked about as potential solutions, and then we'll open it up for Q and A. And so as Casey said, if you have questions, put them in the chat route and we'll get to everything at the end. So here's a kind of roadmap of the pieces of the presentation. We'll start, sorry, we'll start with a little bit of the constitutional responsibilities. Normally, this is a longer section of the presentation, but to kind of keep it a little quicker here, we just pulled up kind of two main pieces, the kind of constitutional backing for a lot of the work we do. And this is the Supreme Court decisions that have come out, the Klemm decisions, maybe you'll have heard of those from the nineties. And there's kind of two specific fundamental responsibilities. The first is that the state has this duty to pay for the cost of a constitutionally adequate education for every K through twelve student. You know, that that word adequate is a bit unfortunate, but it is more expansive and future oriented than just kind of your bare basics. And we'll kind of get into what the state kind of argues is adequate today. And the second piece is that the taxes that the state uses to pay for that education have to be uniformed and rate across the state. And there's actually two specific lawsuits that are being fought right now. One that hits largely in that first bullet, one that hits largely in that second bullet. And so this is not a new issue and is still a very hot and relevant legal issue on that, on that case, on that front. These are two cases I just, I just mentioned. The conduct case largely is arguing the state is not giving enough money to school districts for that out of education. And actually, the next hearing scheduled to start in April, so pretty soon. And the RAN suits are even kind of the other side of that. Basically, that since we rely so heavily on local property taxes to fund our public education system, and those are wildly different across the state, that that is by definition violating that uniform and rate piece of the Klemm. All right, so now let's dig into a little bit more of the property taxes in the funding of our education and those inadequacies. And I'm gonna start here with kind of this big picture, what are we looking at? Dollar amount for public education. So these are newest numbers that were released recently from the Department of Revenue Administration and Department of Education. And what you can see here is, you know, we spend about three point six billion dollars a year on our public schools, which is a lot of money, especially for a state with a budget, I think, eleven or twelve billion dollars total. So we do spend a good amount of money on our public education system. The problem is where that money is coming from. So what you can see here is sixty percent comes from local property taxes. But another ten percent comes from what's called the statewide education and property tax. And Jen will get into a little bit more later on, how the state kind of takes credit for that, even though it's technically, you know, it really is a local property tax. So really, at the end of the day, about seventy percent of all our funding for our schools comes from local property taxes. You can see the green pieces are state aid. How we highlight the four percent coming from the lottery, which is not nothing, but is a lot less than most people think when how much the lottery plays up the fund education. It really is a pretty small piece of the pie. And this reliance on local property taxes for school district revenue just continues to get larger every year. Just in the past ten years, that local taxation reliance has increased by six hundred million, over six hundred million dollars. And you can see pales in comparison to some of the other categories. And that federal funds category actually got a nice bump from a lot of the COVID-related aid, federal aid packages. So even before this past, this past year, that was significantly lower. And you can see that a net result of some other state aids have actually decreased over the years as well. And it's not just schools that we rely so heavily on local property taxes for, although they are the driving force behind the, the property tax being the largest tax in New Hampshire by a long shot. And you can see here that the local schools, about two point two billion swept, which again is effectively another local education, a local property tax, three hundred and sixty-three million. And then that Missipon County, a lot of that being driven in part by the downshifting of the retirement system by the state. But something I like to highlight in this particular chart is, and this will kind of, you'll, you'll see this being a theme throughout this presentation, is the, the business taxes, the next one over, that business profits and business enterprise tax. And the reason we really kind of show this is A to show how much larger the profit taxes than any other tax. But also, in comparison, the business taxes received so much attention at the state legislature in Concord. Every two years, especially during the budget, which is being negotiated and we're talking right now. A lot of attention is put to how much to cut or not cut the business taxes. And yet, if lawmakers of Concord really wanted to help, especially help everyone in the state, they would be focusing more on do say our reliance on property taxes. So two quick slides to show kind of the, where we are in the, in relative to the rest of the country. And so what you can see is property tax as a revenue of just total state share, as a share of total state and local tax revenue. And this is also the newest data from the Census, US Census Bureau, they put this out last fall. They're kind of like a full year behind and it takes a bit to get the data out. But what you can see is that we have the highest reliance of any other state by quite a bit. And on the flip side, the amount of funding that the state contributes to schools, we are the lowest. And what you can see is that, you know, our, our state only contributes about thirty percent. And I believe that includes, that is giving them credit for some of that swept money as well, which, you know, we argue is effectively a local education tax. And you can see our, our neighbors own Vermont, the state contributes over ninety percent of the school funding comes from the state. And a piece of how we kind of go about bringing it back down into New Hampshire community, how we kind of look at the impact of property taxes and how it funds our schools, our community's ability to pay for that, is this term called equalized value for pupil. This is a term that the, the state departments use. And what it really is, is looking at how much taxable property value does a town have behind each student that could be taxable to support that student's education. And this is really valuable to understand because we rely so heavily on local property taxes. It's helpful to know kind of like, what's the, what's the range there, what's the limit there from town to town? And so we've got to explain this concept a little bit. I'll just do this, we have the kind of simple math problem here. So let's say we have the town A with a property value of a billion dollars, town B with an average property value of four thousand dollars, that equalized value per pupil. So if they had the same tax rate, the ten dollars per thousand, those two communities raised pretty different amounts of money. You know, so ten thousand for community A and four thousand for community B. But say they both are trying to buy something that costs ten thousand dollars. Well, then community B needs to increase their tax rate by two and a half times. Now their tax rate is twenty-five dollars per thousand, just to raise the same amount as community A. And this wouldn't really be a problem if the property value and students were roughly distributed evenly around the state. So that more students were in places where there were more property values, so that they, that would kind of even out. But obviously, that's not how it is. And so there's a lot of numbers here. And again, I think Casey said at the beginning, but I'll reiterate, we will be sending this out afterwards for everyone that was here. So you can kind of review this again, because I know it kind of moved a little quickly here. But I want to kind of pull out a few towns to really drive home this point about why it's so detrimental that the state downshifts so much of the burden of public education funding onto local property taxpayers. So let's look here at Portsmouth at the top. Portsmouth and Milford, you'll see, and each kind of like pairing have similar numbers of students, not pupils, Colin. So Portsmouth has that equalized value for people. Remember the amount of property, taxable property behind each student could be taxed to raise money for, for public education of a little under four million dollars per pupil. And their current equalized school tax rate, so it's both their local education tax rate and swept, is about five and a half dollars per thousand, which raises and can raise twenty-one thousand dollars per student. Now, Milford, now you have similar school population, only about twenty-five kids off, has an equalized value of just a million dollars per pupil. And so they have a school tax rate of not quite three times, but almost three times as much as Portsmouth. And yet they raise fifteen thousand dollars compared to Portsmouth's twenty-one thousand. So similar students taxing much higher, but raising less money per student. So you can actually see the like pounding of aggressivity of this tax system. And you can kind of see this throughout the state. And sometimes it's a little more obvious, sometimes it's a little less, but you just see that, and you look all the way to the bottom there, London and Bristol. Pretty similar tax rates, only a dollar seventy off, right? But New London's a whole of raised almost three times the amount of money on that same tax rate as Bristol per student. Because New London has much higher property values on average. And where we see this play out is all over the state. So most students come from communities that have below average property value. Again, that matters because we rely so heavily on these local education, property taxes to fund our schools. And so seventy-five percent of students live in the towns in the state with below average property values. And so we pull this out because it's really important to, to remember, this is not just us cherry pick some specific towns to say, oh, these are really big issues that we can then, you know, advocate for our agenda, right? This is an issue that is all over the state. And it doesn't just affect the towns with below average property values, also those with, have the higher, have, have higher property value. But it really does pound the towns with lower property values. So one last kind of series of examples, and then toss it over to Jen. So I know sometimes talking tax rates and tax bills gets a little confusing. So let's just look at, what's the dollar amount coming out of people's pockets? So we looked up, just looked at some Zillow listings for different houses around the state. And to try to see what property tax bill, how much are these people actually paying in there for their education property taxes? So here are two, two homes, they're from two different towns. And you can, you know, the point here is that the home on the left is kind of larger and has more, more amenities. And the fascinating thing is, is that they pay in twenty twenty, their school property tax bill, the amount of cash actually coming out of their pockets was almost exactly the same. And the house on the left in Freedom was valued at a little under three times the amount of the house on the left, right in Brentwood. And, you know, something that's challenging in, in, in New Hampshire is getting income information for various reasons. One of the main ones, maybe we don't have an income tax. But something that we can, I think, make a good assumption is that the, the individual or family living in the, in the house in Freedom probably has a higher earning potential, probably has more income, probably has more access to resources than those, the folks living in the house in Brentwood. And we see this all over the state. There's a little less aggressive of a, of a comparison, but Littleton and Monroe. The house in Monroe is almost twice as, as valuable as a house in Littleton, and yet they're paying the exact same amount on their school property taxes. Because in Monroe, they can keep their, their tax rates a little lower because they have more property value to tax. Bristol and Canaan, same thing, not as aggressive as that first comparison, but two communities relatively close to each other and paying basically the same amount for very different values of the properties. All right, so now I think we're gonna pass on over to Jen for the second half here. And Jen, just let me know when you want me to go to the slides and I'll take care of it for you.
Oh, okay, that sounds good. Yep, so I'm gonna just go through a few slides that illuminate the gap between what the state provides as aid and what schools actually spend to operate. So you forward ahead. Okay, so this slide basically demonstrates what the formula is that the state uses to determine what each town is eligible to receive in what's called adequacy aid. So to start off, they, they assign about four thousand dollars for every student. So every kid in New Hampshire gets four thousand dollars. And then after that, the state applies differential aid that's meant to differentiate for different types of students. And so they get, you get about nineteen hundred dollars for each student that's eligible for free or reduced price lunch. So this is intended to sort of normalize for fiscal disparity. And so as you go on, you'll see you get about seven hundred dollars for every student in your school who's an English language learner. Two thousand dollars for every student who's receiving sped services. That might be kids who are on IEPs specifically, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. And then they also apply about seven hundred dollars for each third grader who's below proficient in reading. So they only do that at the third grade level, which I think is the state's way of making sort of acknowledging that kids who cannot read proficiently by the time they finish third grade tend to be left behind in later grades because learning becomes very text-based when you reach the fourth grade. So that totals out to about four thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars per student on average across the state. So, so you know, nominally about a thousand dollars more than what that, that base adequacy aid is. And so this chart is going to show what schools currently spend relative to what the state provides in adequacy aid. And so the middle bar here is the state average. So across the state, on average, schools are spending twenty thousand, sixty dollars on each student. So these are fiscal year twenty-two numbers specifically. And in fiscal year twenty-two, the state applied adequacy aid came to, as I said before, about four thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars per student. So you can see that giant gap and that, and that average really doesn't have any outliers across the state. You can go through this exercise with town after town after town and essentially see that schools spend on average about twenty thousand dollars per student. Some spend significantly more and some spend less. I think Manchester spends about fifteen thousand dollars per student and again receives about four thousand dollars per student in state adequacy aid. So I think the next slide is going to show. So I think the question is, sorry, I was jumping ahead of myself, I thought the next slide was different. But I think the question is, you know, what is an adequate education, right? So the state wants to say, hey, towns, you can adequately educate your students for about four thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars per kid. So, right, schools obviously are spending twenty thousand dollars per kid. So are schools, you know, radically overspending relative to what the state thinks they should be spending to provide education for kids? So the town of Pittsfield decided to take the time to go through an exercise. So in fiscal year twenty nineteen, the state of New Hampshire said, according to the adequacy calculation, that Pittsfield's five hundred and eighty-one students should be able to be adequately educated for about two point seven million dollars, which was about forty-six hundred dollars per student. So the school district's budget in fiscal year twenty nineteen was actually about ten million dollars, which was about seventeen thousand seven hundred dollars per student. So the exercise that they went through was to say, well, what would we need to do? And this was the school board with the administration, what would we need to do to be able to create a budget that would reflect what the state thinks we should be spending to adequately educate our students? And so I won't fully belabor the point, but the next three slides will show you as you flip through what the board and school administration had to remove, or at least what they chose to remove to reach the budget. And as you go through, it's a excessively long list. By the time you get to the bottom, you don't have a principal, you, you have no school nurses. You've gotten rid of significant, not only extracurricular programming, but curricular programming like science, for example, was no longer available at the school because they couldn't afford the teacher that they needed to teach the class. They got rid of a lot of staff. Fundamentally, what they did with those three slides of reductions, they were able to maintain most of what the quote unquote core K through twelve classrooms were. So you have no art, you have no design lab, you have no, basically, what some people might consider the bells and whistles of learning. So you basically have a bunch of kids in class that are learning math and reading. And so they maintained those classes, but their class size now averaged about twenty-nine kids per teacher. But their budget still hadn't reached the two point seven million dollars. They were still at five point three million dollars. So gosh, what were they gonna do? So basically, they had already eliminated almost everything, so they got rid of half of the remaining teachers. So their class size is now sixty students per teacher, which is pretty ludicrous. I think, you know, from, from my perspective, they must have been, in this budget, you would be planning on teaching first through fifth grade, right, in one class, or maybe first through fourth grade in one class. You know, and so I think the overarching question is, how does anyone, you know, realistically believe that the, what the state is providing as aid can actually adequately educate students? I mean, I think arguably, maybe you would be able to keep the doors open and the heat on and the snow plowed. But I don't think you'd be maintaining like your capital investment of a building. So that building is just gonna like wither away over time. So next slide. So I think this, this slide just presents a little bit of fairness. So I've been talking about adequacy aid in terms of state aid. There are some additional aids that the state does deliver annually. They're not necessarily guaranteed. Adequacy aid is pretty much guaranteed to be continued year to year to year. It may change in its formulaic structure, but you're always gonna have it. And you're always gonna have it because the New Hampshire State Constitution says the state has to deliver some type of aid, right? To, to, to deliver adequate, adequate education to kids. So the state does have a couple of other grant measures. One here we're identifying as additional aid. And so this is currently includes some relief aid and extraordinary needs aid. So extraordinary needs aid is a given to towns or school districts that have some special education needs that are outside relative to what I guess would be expected as the norm. And so an example of this would be an out-of-district placement. The state does not reimburse you for a hundred percent as a district of what you spend. I think that they, they, and they don't guarantee anything. They guarantee to raise a certain amount of money in a fund and then annually, town, school districts can tell the town, or rather, tell the state what they spent. And that would be eligible for extraordinary need. And then the state figures out what the, that need is relative to what they raised in the fund. And then they dispense it and they just dispense that on a per capita basis. So you may get anywhere from twenty-five to fifty percent of the expenditure sort of recouped in a following year as revenue and grant aid from the state. Relief aid goes to towns who have demonstrable fiscal needs, so fiscal disparity aid. Obviously, there's swept, which I think most people are familiar with, that's the statewide education property tax. And then there's also something called stabilization aid that has been around since twenty twelve. And I won't get into the details of what stabilization aid are, but it's essentially meant to assist towns that are poor in property value. And it's supposed to help offset the costs of their, their need to operate their school districts. And so when you add all of that together, the calculated cost of adequate, adequate education the additional aid and the stabilization aid, the, the state then subtracts swept. Or really what they do is they subtract what you raise and swept from the calculated cost of an adequate education. So that complete sum becomes the town's adequacy grant for a particular fiscal year. And I think the next slide uses Concord as an example. And what I hope, one of the first things that you can see is that those additional grants, so the relief aid and the stabilization aid are, I think, arguably nominal relative to, one, what the state does calculate that, that, that the school district is eligible for in, in state aid. And it's certainly nominal relative to what a district actually spends to operate. So in fiscal year twenty-two, the total cost of the, the total calculated cost of inadequate education in Concord was about twenty million dollars. They were able to, they were eligible for about six hundred thousand dollars in relief aid and another one point seven million dollars in stabilization aid. So but what the, what the, before, so but before the state actually determined what they would distribute to Concord as state aid, they determined what Concord raised with the statewide education property tax, which in fiscal year twenty-two was seven point three million dollars. And then they take that and they subtract it from the state aid. And so I think this is really the easiest and most direct way to defend our position that the swept, that statewide education property tax is just another local education property tax, right? That the state is taking, you know, they're taking sort of credit for. And if we didn't use the property tax, if we didn't apply the property tax to fund nearly every service in New Hampshire, it might not be such an enormous problem, but it's just you're essentially dipping into that same revenue source again. You know, and, and essentially, the state looks at Concord and says, well, you guys raised another seven million dollars, so we're gonna give you seven million dollars less. That's fundamentally how I see it. And I think from the point of view of being a school board member, it's, it's an interesting thing. At, at times, I mean, certainly in Lyme, we've at times have, have had residents who get very interested and curious about how the finances of the school are, you know, are sort of being overseen. And this money will show You know, are sort of being overseen. And this money will show up on. Your balance sheets as revenue, and it becomes very um. It just becomes very complicated to sometimes explain to people. Well, no, we didn't actually receive that money. We actually raised that money on our own. Um, and and it's really interesting to see people's like response to that, um, when when they learn about sort of how the. How the system actually works in its, you know, fundamental sense. Um, so what are, right, the consequences and implications of the current funding system? So I'm gonna just provide two examples, and they're two of many examples. But comparing starting teacher salaries, you can see. The impact of a district's um difficulty. In applying that local education property tax to raise enough money to run the school. In the salaries that they're able to offer teachers. And so at the high end, right, is Portsmouth. And Zach, I think you used Portsmouth as an example earlier, right? Portsmouth is one of these towns that has a relatively high equalized value per pupil, so applies a relatively low tax rate. And generally speaking, the people who live in the houses in Portsmouth, and this isn't always true, but I think it's as a general trend. They can afford their taxes because their incomes are high enough. And the amount of property tax that they pay relative to the income is um is not. Maybe burdensome. In many cases, it's probably five to six percent, right? And so Portsmouth can raise the sort of extra money, right, that they need to pay teachers well. Which allows them to retain teachers, and it also allows them to hire more teachers who have um, who are experienced educators. Um, and so Portsmouth's starting salary for a level, level one in step and track is about fifty thousand dollars. Um, if you have a master's degree, they're able to bump that up to about fifty-five thousand dollars. But compare that to Manchester, for example, and Dover, and I think Newport's even lower than this, than than the numbers. I think Newport may be the lowest in the state at about thirty-five thousand dollars. Um. One thing that happens in these districts that aren't able to pay as much is that these districts end up serving as training grounds, right? For the larger districts or districts that can pay more. And so off the top of my head, I know I've heard this um from the superintendent in Newport. Where, you know, they may hire a teacher and he or she will know. They're gonna keep this teacher for about three years, and then that teacher's gonna have enough experience to apply for a job in Concord, right? Where they'll see a ten, fifteen thousand dollar bump in their annual salary, just by moving right to the district next door. And so that's just one impact, um, that's felt by school districts. Uh, because of the way that the funding mechanism currently works. So another, another thing, um. Another thing that you'll see is, um, if you look specifically at cooperative districts, and here we're showing. The fiscal year twenty-two school tax rate um for the Timberlane Regional School District, which includes these four towns. Atkinson, Stanville, uh, Placedow, and and Sandown. Um, and the kids in these towns may attend elementary schools that are resident in the town. And then, you know, it's, so this is mostly like high school where kids start completely blending together. But what you see is that um, the tax rate in Sandown. Is almost six dollars higher than the tax rate in Atkinson. And so what does that rate do? To a homeowner who actually has to pay the bill. So basically, in Sandown, what you're seeing is that to educate their kids in a cooperative school district, they're spending. About five thousand dollars tax if they own a house that's assessed at three hundred, whereas the house in Atkinson is. Um, paying significantly less, twenty-eight hundred dollars annually in a home that's, you know, that carries the same value. Um, and so these, these types of, these types of issues can cause um, can cause a lot of conflict. Um, one, one, one place that comes to mind is Fall Mountain, right? Fall Mountain contains the towns of Walpole and Charlestown, which are like really. Almost polar opposite in terms of income, and I think that the school board there, you know, has a lot of problems trying to balance the budgets out. To make the tax rate and the impact felt by the homeowner in that. In that individual house and what they can afford to pay, you know, manageable, um, so that everybody can attend school. I think it's back, back to you now, Zach.
Yes, thank you, Jen. I will uh wrap it up with like two or three more slides here, and then I wanna kind of put. Um, everyone, let everyone know, you'll do a few more slides here, and then we'll open up for Q and A. And so you can either put the questions uh just right in the chat or uh raise your hand. Here we can unmute that question live since we have a s- a smaller group here tonight. So. Just to kind of uh ground us again, both for this last section and for some of our questions. Is really the issue that we are really focused on is the blue portion of this pie chart. That heavy reliance at seventy percent of all funding for our public education system that comes from local property taxes. And so I wanted to just name a few specific proposals um. That are going on right now, because again, a lot of what we're trying to talk about in our general presentations. But also drive home this series for school board members and uh those running or considering running is. That a lot of the attention, a lot of the pressure that Jen was just talking about are downshifted from the state. I mean, this is the state failing to do its constitutional responsibility, but also giving a ridiculously small amount of money. To school districts, to school boards. And then you all need to figure out how to balance that, how to balance your ability to raise taxes, who can afford that, just with having the state give so little money. So there's a few proposals, um, I'm gonna focus on one specifically, because um, it is the, you know, knock on wood, gonna pass. The House tomorrow in the process, which is House Bill five twenty-nine. So what this would do is add. Um, two different or add one new aid category to that formula Jen walked through. That takes into account the community's equalized value for people, so their their ability to raise money, right, and really target more funding. Towards the communities with lower property values that right now have much higher tax rates. Um, and this is something that we definitely support and definitely would. Take into account the way in which we currently fund our system and try to relieve the pressure on the communities feeling it the most. Um, and then the other piece is the state budget. Uh, so the state budget was announced uh last Tuesday by the governor, and then he gave a pretty in-depth presentation to the House Finance Committee on Wednesday. Um, and I guess I will, uh, that's not, I'm happy to answer more questions about the budget if people have specific questions. It's kind of an ongoing thing. The the bill itself has not come out um just yet. Uh, but basically, the budget, um, the government proposed uh some pretty sweeping changes to education funding and some pretty significant increases. Um, not, you know, solving the problem by any means, but definitely a step in the right direction. And a lot of that has to do with a lot of conversations that. We've been trying to have with folks and that local school board members, local officials having, um, you know, and pushing for more serious deliberations around how to. Address this issue. Um, so we'll be kind, keeping everyone updated on on how that process is moving, but there's definitely. A lot happening and a lot of potential in the budget itself. Um, so I'm going to uh end with this, and actually, Casey, before we jump into questions, I'm gonna ask. Um, one of our participants who I did uh let know I was gonna do this, um, but uh. That uh, the budget exercise that Jen ran through that we did at Pittsfield a few years ago. We actually just did another one uh a few months ago, um, with some folks in Allenstown. And so we actually have uh Chris on the call tonight who uh ran that exercise. So I thought it'd be cool for folks to hear from um her. She just did this exercise um with her school board um and their budget. So Chris, if you wouldn't mind just sharing like for a minute or two uh what that was like and and what you learned.
Sure, first thing, quick check on audio. Am I coming through okay?
Yep.
Perfect, thank you very much. So yeah, for the group, so I believe it was Jennifer's, one of her first few slides. Where she had, um, it was a full slide of eliminate, 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 and Jennifer was going through everything that I had done. So I actually did that in Allenstown, and this can certainly be done by any school board member. It was an Excel ex- exercise. So I started just by taking Allenstown's fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So it's that that multi-line spreadsheet that we all have to deal with every time now. School boards are going to pass a budget and send it over to the NBC. And then I literally just put it in Excel and just started eliminating because I had a twelve point two million dollar budget. And then to get down to that state adequacy number of two point four eight mil- uh, two point four million. I had to eliminate nine point eight million dollars. So it truly became a budget. Um, Excel exercise where I was just zeroing out lines. So that at the end of the day, what remained literally fit on a Post-it note. And so I took this information, took the summary that you all saw that Jennifer had read through. And I presented that to our town when we were presenting the school budgets to, again, get that. The message out of how do we raise money for our schools? Zach, I hope I covered what you wanted me to.
That was wonderful and very succinct. I appreciate it. So I'll pick over the casey.
I think it's also worth making the point that you'd be completely out of legal compliance with not only federal law, but state law. If if you actually were able to pare down to to that, to that uh, to the adequacy budget.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and Jennifer, we did drive that point home, but like I said, you know, also basically showing what is left afterwards. Like you can put all of that on a slide, but I literally have the Post-it note in my hand. So this, this is what's left. So, yeah, we we try to to get, again, get that education out to the text.
Yeah, and it was submitted as a, it was submitted as an op-ed, right, Zach? Um, so it makes a really, it makes a really good, you know, point in the local paper. So the idea is kind of hopefully that we can get. Some other cities and towns and school boards to do the same exercise to stir up some. Um, some discussion, but kind of in that same vein, Zach, do you wanna talk about the Franklin Resolution um that just got passed?
Yes, thank you, thank you for the reminder. Um, uh, yeah, so we had a a member of the school board in Franklin. Um, worked with us, reached out to us, and um. Uh, they drafted a resolution, a formal resolution that worked its way through their their process, the committee process of the school board. And just passed unanimously yesterday that effectively um calls on the state, you know, lays out some of these disparities. How much state aid Franklin gets, how much money they actually need to raise and spend for their public schools. And really calls out the state and calls on the state to frankly do better and provide them with more funding. And they passed this resolution and passed unanimously yesterday, um, which is pretty exciting. Um, and that's something that we also have as a template. We've sent that already off to a few other communities. That are starting working through their processes and, you know, while it's not legally binding, it really shows. And it's calling directly on the state legislature to to do better on this issue and to direct more funding. So that's kind of another direct action that folks uh can take if they're interested.
Awesome. Great, all right. So. At this point, if anybody has any questions, you are welcome to raise your hand. Um, and unmute yourself or drop them in the chat. Um. I can start off with a couple that I have to guide our conversation. Um, I just have to switch screens and I only have one right now. So if anybody does raise their hand, Zach, if you could just.
Sure.
Uh, speak up and let me know. Um. So the first one that um I can kind of start with is um. What is a good approach to kind of take at when um, when folks, you know, talk about accusing school board members of overspending? On public schools and raising their taxes as a result, when we know who's really at fault?
Jen, you wanna start with this one?
Yeah, it's interesting. Um, it's an interesting question. I mean, I guess like, I mean, from my perspective. One thing that I do at school district meeting every year is present just some data, right? Not dissimilar to the data that you saw today, that really hammers home the point. That we as a town are raising seventy percent of the money to to run and fund our schools. They're, they're definitely. Are people in my town who think we're spending too much and would like to see us spend less. I I have to admit that those people are in the vast minority in my my small town. Um, people really, I I would honestly say as a school board member, we should probably not, we don't need a budget that's as high as it is. Um, and so, so as a school board member, I kind of have the opposite problem of sort of saying like, hey, well, like, can we impart some efficiencies here? Um, but, but yeah, it's difficult. And and I think that. You know, combining. The understanding of how important it is fundamentally as a society. To educate children, not just adequately, but well, you know, would would be ideal. Um, and I think like accompanying that message, maybe what what I, what I always. Try to say, you know, a lot of, I think this problem is rooted in this old school New Hampshire sense. Of every town for itself, right? We have a town and as a town, you have a local government and everything's local and it's small. And therefore, the residents of the town have complete control over how much. They raise in taxation and spend, and everybody agrees that this is great. And I think that with some services, you can make the argument maybe from the perspective of roads. And even in this case, there are gonna be exceptions. Um, that maybe that works, but I think that the value of a public education does not end at a town's border. Right, those kids are gonna go everywhere and and my child's right to an education is no different. Than a child in Newport's right to a good education that's gonna prep that child. To be a productive member of society. And I really do believe that the way that this system is structured, it has putting. Districts and children at a disadvantage, right? And and the fact in some ways that my town, right, can raise so much money and keep it right here in in our town is, it's a problem. I think. Um, it's a difficult, that's a difficult, it's a difficult like line to walk. And I'm not sure it's necessarily fully relevant to the question, but I think that maybe trying to raise to the surface conceptually. That public education shouldn't be restricted, right, to to a particular town's resident's ability to pay. Because those, we all rely on that. That's the society that we've decided as a, you know, species. That we're going to live in, right? Public education goes back to like the founding fathers.
Thank you. Um, so for our next and probably last question, um, from Greg in Salem, it's two parts. What is legally possible in terms of addressing the property tax disparity? And does the state constitution have to change? In order to allow for a progressive education tax?
Good question, Greg. Uh, I'll do it first, I'll do it first then, uh, Jen, let me know. Um, but. First, like what needs to change legally? So I, I think I'll get your input, if not, please feel free to put it in the chat. Everything that Jen went over, the kind of like base adequacy, all the differential aid, you know, basically the the, at the end of the day, the amount of money. The state is sending and the formulas they use, that is just law, meaning. At it, at its most simple form, it just requires a majority in the House, the Senate, and the governor to sign it like any other bill, right? So if they wanted to, they could double that money tomorrow. Obviously, they need to figure out where it's coming from, but the point being that those numbers and the calculations and all the formulas is just laws. Um, and are that are actively being discussed right now as part of the state budget process. So. Um, I guess to get more specific, it would be like, you know, the adequacy calculations that would need to be changed. Um, but again, just laws that have been changed or not changed for years or decades. And so there's a, there's a will element there more than like a really high legal or constitutional barrier to changing this. It's a, they haven't changed it because they haven't felt pressured to, in my opinion, in a way that results in them doing substantial changes to the funding formula. Um, in order to, the progressive tax question is really interesting. Because those of you who don't know, you know, we can't have progressive taxes in New Hampshire, but we're not supposed to be able to tax different people at different rates for the same thing. Um, so, for example, you shouldn't be paying different forms of meals tax in Bedford than you do in Bradford, right? It's like you pay the same rate across the state. Uh, that's kind of the the basis of the. Argument of why the reliance on property taxes is a violation of that part of the constitution. Because we are paying dramatically different education property tax rates to fund public education, depending on where you live. Um, and so that's kind of one of the lines of argument against that um piece of the current system that is progressive in the different ways. Shouldn't have that as a state. So to change the constitution is kind of a whole nother barrier. Um, you have to have a constitutional amendment that passes by three fifths in the House and Senate, then goes to a vote of the people uh on the ballot. So that's a much higher barrier. The much more approachable one is just. The state increasing a lot of funding and targeting in a way that helps tamp down some of those huge peaks and valleys. That helps tamp down some of those huge peaks and valleys in property tax rates across the state.
Yeah, you can't have the progressive rate schedule, so everyone has to be taxed at the same rate, but you don't have to distribute it equally, right? The the state doesn't have to say something to the effect of, if the adequacy formula changed, well, we'll give eleven thousand dollars per every kid. And there was a commission to study school funding. This was during the year twenty twenty, because it was a co- I remember it was COVID year. And uh it was a number of representatives, some um community members who had, you know, specific knowledge. They were, you know, su- former superintendents or uh people who work in school districts, um, a prominent tax attorney. The former commissioner of D R A. So it was a really well-staffed, I guess, um, committee of people. And they hired um the American Institutes for Research, or I should say they contracted with them to uh basically develop a formula. Um, that would do just that. So essentially, their recommendation, which I think fell a little short of where we should be as a state. But their recommendation was to apply, and this again was fiscal year twenty, the numbers would be different today. A a twelve dollar statewide education property tax that towns would truly remit to the state. And all of that money would be collected and in collected in a fund. Then a sort of much more progressive formula would be applied to determine what the distribution of that money would be. And to give you some of the numbers that I knocked out of my head to give you some example, um. They, a town like Newport, New Hampshire, which um has a lot of students suffering in from fis- from fiscal disparity. Um, and policymakers know that you need to spend more um to to sort of reach those kids. Um, and give them the tools that they need, you know, relative, and I'll just use my town, so nobody, no one gets, no one gets mad at me. You know, relative to what um maybe the formula would say a child in Lyme needs. And there are, this wasn't a perfect system and I'm not necessarily like fully advocating for it. But fundamentally, what the distribution would say, would would look like is that a town, I think Newport would get about twenty two thousand dollars per student. From that fund, then they could apply a local education property tax to raise more if they wanted to. Or not, but Newport currently today spends about, well, or at least in fiscal year twenty, they spent about sixteen thousand dollars. And they, they were using like a twenty six dollar tax rate to do it, right? And so they would then be spending twelve dollars and getting more out of the, uh, you know, out of that, out of that system. Um, and because they need it, you know, their their school is really struggling in a variety of different ways, and that was what that formula was showing. So relative to that, a town like Lyme, well, I don't know, I can't, I don't remember what we would calculate that we would put in. But we would essentially extract about fourteen thousand dollars per child. So we would pay that twelve dollar proper, you know, that twelve dollar statewide education property tax. We would now, we would not be able to adequately run our school even for fourteen thousand dollars. So we would then have to apply a local education property tax to to bring us up and sort of like hold us harmless. And and that's sort of what what would happen across the state. Um, it would make a enormous difference to a town like Portsmouth that currently, right, has a sub ten dollar. Education property tax rate and they're raising enough to spend twenty five, twenty six thousand dollars per kid. Their tax rate would would at baseline go to twelve dollars. But they would, Portsmouth, probably only get fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars per student. So their their tax rate would go up even more, right? To a town like mine, it wouldn't really make a difference. We pay like twenty dollars per thousand towards education now. We would be paying twenty dollars per thousand towards education later. So I don't think it's a perfect fix for this. It's not a perfect fix and people in Portsmouth would be, you know, horrified. By the fact that their tax rate would suddenly like double or triple. But at minimum, it would make the point that this is happening, right? This, this, this sort of disparity is happening. It just happens to be happening to the people who have the like weakest voice in Concord. Uh, you know, and so that, so the state's able to just, just keep doing this. But, you know, to people in Newport, Claremont, I know someone here is from Berlin. It's not a joke, you know, it is real, real impact. Um, to to children, so it's very frustrating. But the commission archived all of their material online. You can watch all their meetings and read, there's a report and you can read sort of about the algorithm that A I R. Put together to create that sort of progressive distribution schedule, but.
Well, seven oh two, yeah.
Yeah, well, I I, you know, thank you everyone for coming. We're a few minutes uh past seven, so I think we'll release folks. Um, I see, uh, you know, a few things we've said to follow up with and sign up for our newsletter, reaching out. Want to get involved in some of the um things we talked about. I see uh Nathan and some of our staff are going to connect about uh maybe the budget exercise in Berlin. I think that's great too, because again, he keeps driving that point home that the state's not saying that funding. Um, and so, yeah, thank you all so much for being here tonight. Really appreciate it. We're doing one more of these next week. So if you have colleagues or friends that you think would benefit from this, please send them um the link. Um, and uh, I hope you all have a good rest of your night.
Thanks, Zach.
All right, take care.
Thanks, Zach and Jen.